Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for August the 19th, 2013. I'd like to remind everybody in our audience tonight, if you have a cellular device, please make sure it's on silent or it's on vibrate so that it won't go off during the meeting. We would greatly appreciate that. As a reminder, this is a live broadcast and that would be very helpful to us if you can take care of that. We start our meetings all the time with our presentation of colors and tonight we're very happy to welcome Boy Scout troop 221 from Calvary Lutheran Church. So at this time, will everybody please rise for our presentation of colors?
Color guard, forward march. Color guard halt, post to colors. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Color guard, return to post.
At this time, I would like to invite Reverend Michael Waters from Parkwood Baptist Church to lead us in an invocation. Welcome.
Thank you. Let us pray. Our Father God, thank you for this privilege to come and gather, Lord, and to see a free people, Lord, in the exercise of government. We know your word tells us to pray for all people in all situations, especially for kings and those in authority, and we pray for this group of leaders tonight. God, we pray you'd give them wisdom, give them discernment. Lord, give them a heart of compassion. Lord, give them a mindset that they would, Lord, do all things to lead with integrity and put community above self-interest. We thank you for their leadership. We thank you for their commitment. We pray, God, that this meeting would bring results that would bring glory and honor to you and would bless this community. In Jesus' name we pray.
Thank you all. Thank you very much for coming tonight. At this time, Commissioner Meesmer is going to go down. I'd like to invite our Boy Scout members to please come forward. At the microphone, if you'll please tell us your name and what school you go to and what grade you're in and what do you like best about scouting? And then after you do that, if you'll go to your left, my right, Commissioner Meesmer will give you a county pin.
My name is Ash Berger. I am a junior at Concord High School and my favorite part about scouting would definitely be the camping.
Thank you.
My name is Mason Berger. I'm 8th grade at Concord Middle School and my favorite part about scouting is the outdoors.
Thank you.
My name is Margaret Bajaj. I'm in 11th grade at Cannon School and my favorite part of scouting is the camping.
Great. Thank you all very much. We appreciate you coming out tonight, especially since you haven't started school yet, so we appreciate you adding us to your calendar. Thank you all. The first item on our agenda, Commissioners, tonight, as you know, we have a vacancy on the commission. The Cabarrus County Republican Party Executive Committee nominated Jason Osterreich on August the 8th, 2013, to fill the vacancy on our board pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 153A 27.1. So at this time, Commissioners, I would accept a motion to appoint Jason Osterreich to the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners for an unexpired term ending December 1st, 2014.
So move.
I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Jason, there you are. And Honorable Judge Marty McGee is here. And we will now have the swearing-in ceremony for our newest commissioner.
Thank you very much. All right. You ready?
I'm ready.
All right. Thank you. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States? So help you God.
I do, so help me God.
And do you solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability? So help you God.
I do, so help me God.
And do you solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the Constitution and the laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Cabarrus County Commissioner? So help you God.
I do, so help me God.
Thank you. If you'll please sign the oath. Congratulations to you and your family and best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Jason, before you are seated, would you do us the pleasure of introducing your wife and your children?
Charlotte. This is my wife, Tanya Osterreich. We've been married for, coming up in 10 years in September, so this is our anniversary present. This is my daughter Elizabeth. She's one, and this is my son, John, who's three.
Great. Okay. The next item on our business is the approval or the correction of the minutes that you found in your agenda, Commissioners. At this time, I'd accept a motion to approve the minutes for the May 28th, 2013 meeting, May 29th, 2013, May 30th, 2013, and June the 3rd, 2013 minutes.
So move.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have the approval of the agenda. As you will notice on the agenda, Commissioners, there is a change. It is item number eight under new business, and Mr. Marshall will speak to us about that item when we get to it. So at this time, may I have a motion to approve the agenda, including the changes?
So move.
To have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have recognitions and presentations. And we'll get to it. Okay, we have a request from the Department of Human Services to approve or to proclaim September as Child Support Awareness Month in Cabarrus County. Child support helps families provide basic needs for children and lowers dependency on public assistance through the collection of support from parents. The Child Support Division collects over $10 million in support from absent parents on behalf of children within the county and seeks to bring awareness to this valuable service to our community. At this time, I'd like to read to you the proclamation. Child Support Awareness Month in Cabarrus County. A proclamation. Whereas the welfare of our children is the most important responsibility we have as parents, a child should be able to depend on support from both parents. And whereas children who do not receive adequate financial and emotional support from both parents may experience greater difficulty in becoming healthy, happy, and productive citizens of this county, in such cases, the taxpayers of this county support the children whose parents failed to meet this responsibility. And whereas many concerned and dedicated judges, district attorneys, clerks of court, sheriff's personnel, and child support professionals work to provide this service to Cabarrus County children, our future now therefore be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of September as Child Support Awareness Month in Cabarrus County and urges all parents who are currently under court order to regularly pay their child support. Do I have a motion to adopt this proclamation?
So move.
I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, I'd like to call Susie Morris and Danny Fespelman to please come up to the podium. And Commissioner Burridge is going to join you. Commissioner Burridge serves as our representative on the Cabarrus County Planning and Zoning Commission. Welcome.
Good evening. Tonight, we are recognizing Mr. Danny Fespelman for his service on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Danny has served on the commission since the restructuring took place in August of 2005. Prior to serving on the County Planning and Zoning Commission, he served on the City of Concord's Planning and Zoning Commission as the Cabarrus County Appointed ETJ Representative from July of 1997 to August of 2003. These appointments combined include a total of 14 years of service for Cabarrus County. Danny always provided a unique perspective as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, not only because of his past experience with the City of Concord, but because of his employment in the development industry as well. Danny has been a tremendous asset to the Planning and Zoning Commission. He served as a mentor for new members on the commission. He also volunteered on the Text Amendment Committee and was a part of the Central Area Land Use Plan Committee. Danny currently serves in the peer-elected leadership role, which oversees meetings in the absence of the Chair and Vice Chair. We hope that Danny has enjoyed his time on the commission and wish him the best. Thank you.
Danny, on behalf of the Planning and Zoning Board, citizens of Cabarrus County, and the Cabarrus County Commission Board, will present you with this plaque. Your check's in the back, but you'll have to get it charmed and fully signed.
I appreciate all those raises.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Fespelman, would you like to say anything for us? I mean, this is your one opportunity. We don't want to let it go.
As Britch knows always, take that opportunity. I would just certainly say that I have enjoyed the last 14 years in service to the county and when I was on the ETJ with the city. And I used to say that, I think in the 14 years, I've missed a total of three meetings. And so I used to say, well, I guess that means that I'm a very individual that wants to put back to his county, that wants to participate and make the county better. Or number two, it just says, I really don't have a life. And so I will compliment, though, what a pleasure it has been to serve in the county position. The county attorney has always given us excellent leadership at our meetings. Susie has made it so, and I work, I'm in development business, so I work, I'm normally in front of Planning and Zoning Commissions asking for forgiveness or whatever. But it's been a pleasure here, and I think the organization within this county, particularly in the Planning and Zoning Department, is excellent. And it's really been a joy for me. And I will be monitoring y'all and I wish y'all continued success because you backed the Planning and Zoning Board. We're appointed, we're not elected, and that's for a purpose. And I think that we have such a fine board that I hated leaving, really, after all these years. It's that good. But anyway, thank y'all again.
Thank you very much. The next item we have is another proclamation. Soil and Water Conservation District was chartered by the state on August the 28th, 1963, as a single-county conservation district out of a multi-county conservation district that was created in 1937. The local district exists to encourage informed and responsible stewardship of the land and all its natural resources. A series of events are planned as part of a year-long observance of the district's 50th anniversary. I'd like to read the proclamation. Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District 50th Anniversary Proclamation. Whereas the internationally recognized soil and water conservationist Dr. Hugh Hammond-Bennett, a North Carolina native from Anson County, dedicated his life to soil and water conservation and brought national attention to soil erosion. And whereas Dr. Bennett recognized that a national soil and water conservation program with local leadership would be the most successful model for working with local private landowners in addressing erosion problems. And whereas, as Dr. Bennett's urging, President Franklin D. Roosevelt promoted sample state legislation that would create local soil and water conservation districts across the United States to lead and direct soil and water conservation programs at the local level. And whereas, since 1937, North Carolina conservation districts have been instrumental in improving the state's natural resources through voluntary incentive-based conservation programs and continue to be the primary voice for the protection, wise use, and conservation of all of the state's natural resources. And whereas, Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District is one of 96 conservation districts which cover all of North Carolina and is led by five elected and appointed North Carolina citizens known as Conservation District Supervisors, who provide leadership for local voluntary stewardship of natural resources. And whereas, Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District exists to encourage the informed and responsible use of the land and all its natural resources, soil, water, animals, plants, and air. And whereas, Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District delivers effective conservation education programs to over 7,500 schoolchildren and adults every year, each year. And whereas, the land and these natural resources are renewable and more enduring than the gold for which Cabarrus County is famous. And whereas, Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District has been served by prominent male and female leaders in our community, including farmers, a banker, and other business persons, a doctor, educators, a lawyer, and a pastor. And whereas, Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District was established as a single-county conservation district out of the multi-county Middle Yadkin Soil and Water Conservation District on August 28th, 1963, in compliance with North Carolina General Statute 139. And whereas, August 28th, 2013, marks the 50th anniversary of Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District and represents a significant milestone in the stewardship of natural resources, now therefore be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim August 28th, 2013, as the beginning of the 50th anniversary year of Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District and commend its celebration to all citizens. May I have a motion to approve the proclamation?
So move.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And no, I do not write those. Okay, the next items we have is informal public comments. I have a number of cards. I have three cards that deal with the incentive that we're going to talk about under new business. I'm going to hold those cards until that time, if that's okay with those people. So I would like to call up Price Crutchfield, please.
Okay, I'm recognized now.
You are recognized, Mr. Crutchfield. Welcome.
Beat City Hall. Yeah, I'm here on a serious matter tonight. I noticed we have some Cabarrus County law enforcement personnel over here. There's been some laws broken in Cabarrus County, and these good enforcers, I wanted to know about it. There's been a member of the Concord Police Department, he just retired. His name is Scott Newell. He retired as a captain with the Concord Police Force. Recently, he retired, a couple months ago. He broke the law and lied under oath to Judge Hamby on me in court when he said, "Your Honor, he's come in restaurants and harassed my family." He made this statement under oath in court. He broke the law in Cabarrus County. And again, I saw some Cabarrus County law enforcement personnel, so I want to make them aware of that. When I complained at the police department about this, you know, checks and balances, I was trying to, you know, have rapport with the government, so to speak, they didn't address the issues. Instead, they said, "Mr. Crutchfield, we know you've been gambling in illegal poker games." That was their response. And I thought, hmm. Well, I felt that was kind of strange, and they'd have to make that statement to me and not address the issues. And if I did gamble, and I say, "If I did," to quote OJ, "if I did," there were no ill-gotten gains. So I don't know any government didn't tax on it. So again, and if I did, if indictments were handed down by our good district attorney, Roxanne Vanahaven, if I did, I'd have to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. That means I'd have to talk about all the people who played cards in the illegal poker game, and we all know who they were. Anyway, getting back to this lying under oath in court, Captain Scott Newell with the Concord Police Department, he broke the law. He lied under oath, and the bigger evil here is, is our check and balance system at the police department. It's a double standard. You know, this is the same police department as I spoke earlier, but, you know, they drink liquor on school property. Just recently, I went up to Kannapolis. You know, we had that terrible thing that happened up there with that police officer and his wife involved in that child internet pornography stuff. The chief of police up there was very receptive. We had a long rapport, we had a long talk. I have to commend the chief of police in Kannapolis for being open and transparent in answering my questions. Can't say the same thing about the Concord Police because they changed the subject and worry about Mr. Crutchfield gambling in illegal poker games. Having a rough time with that one. These are supposed to be professionals. Maybe that's why they got so many unsolved murders in this city. They never talk about that either. I find that very bizarre. You never hear anything on TV about how many unsolved murders there are in Concord. Instead, they're worried about Mr. Crutchfield playing cards in illegal poker games. Have a nice day.
Thank you. On the, the next item we have is our consent agenda, Commissioners. There are 11 items on there. At this time, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now we have new business. First item that we have, item of business we have is economic development grant request for Windshear. We do have need for a public hearing. Before we call for the public hearing, I would like to call Margie Bukowski and Carol Gray. I don't know who's going to come up and talk. Okay. Mr. Gray? If you would like to present this item to us. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, and members of the commission, it's a pleasure to be here tonight to talk about a project that is proposed that we would seek your approval on. And it's a project by Windshear, who has indicated to us and to the EDC, they would like to apply for an EDC development grant based upon an investment of $5 million with seven jobs and average wages of over $30 an hour. I would like to indicate that Windshear has been a member of this community for six years. And over the six years, the company has paid or is in the process of paying a total tax levy of $1.4 million. And the grant that Windshear received from this board six years ago, a total of $590,000 for a net to the county from Windshear over the past six years of $836,000. This particular project would be a $5 million investment. And over the following three years, we would seek from you a three-year taxes, tax rate, or grant, rather, of $105,000, which would be a net three-year revenue to the county of $15,750. And the subject of incentives is before you tonight. This project has come before the Economic Development Corporation, which is a partnership between Cabarrus County and the Cabarrus Regional Chamber. You have received a letter from Ms. Lynn Scott Safrat, who is the Chair of the EDC, informing members of the commission that this is a project that has been reviewed and recommended to the commission for your consideration. We have done a little bit of research in terms of providing some context to the commission. We've looked the region over and evaluated the various incentives that exist in Mecklenburg County and surrounding counties. And we have information that, if you care to receive it, I'll have it here available to your manager to distribute to you at a later time. But the point being, out of this research, shows that Cabarrus County has one of the smaller incentives available to business, expanding business or incoming business of any county in our region. So I think that's significant, that we have a great county, we have the ability to recruit, but we don't have to offer a great deal of incentive, but this is a small incentive that would be significant to the company, and we understand that that's an issue that you will debate and decide either tonight or at a later date. I would just like to say that this particular project that Windshear is seeking your approval of for the incentive is a, is a green project in the sense that it works in terms of helping vehicles to reduce their wind drag and thereby use less gasoline and create less pollution in the air and actually is a safe, has a safety factor in terms of working with vehicles and trucks. This particular project would be an expansion of their current wind tunnel, which would create an ability for Windshear to have a scale model of a large vehicle and do the wind testing for the wind drag for that particular project. Some of you may have been familiar with this in the past. This is one of the, I personally have a really good feeling in my head regarding an expanding industry. We feel like these particular companies have come here, have established themselves in the community, have hired people, have done what they said they would do, and they're asking your consensus to enable them to proceed. So that is the nut of the presentation. We'd be glad to try to answer any questions that you might have in this regard.
Okay, thank you. What we're going to do is we're going to open the public hearing up, and I do have some comment cards. So at this time, I'd like to open a public hearing to consider the economic development grant request for Windshear. I do have four cards. Ronald Chandler. Can you come up if you'll please state your name? Though I'm calling you out, there may be others that come up after I go through your card.
My name is Ronald Chandler, and I'm against the tax incentive form. I feel like it should be, the business in the county should get tax breaks, you know, if they're going to get them, and also the people who pay the taxes in the county. I just feel like, you know, we should have a, look around and see if any way we could cut people's taxes instead of increase our taxes. And I'm sure down the road, this will come back if we keep giving a whole lot of incentives to a lot of different companies. And I just, I'm just against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card I have is Jean Chandler.
Good evening. First, I'd like to say welcome to Jason, our new commissioner. I'm thrilled to have you. My name is Jean Chandler, and I've been reading about all the information that, about the Windshear and how they say they will generate new jobs and bring money to our county. And I disagree with giving them the tax break incentive because I feel that our businesses in our county, our loyal, small businesses, they don't get these tax incentives. And I'm just an average taxpayer, and I don't think it's right to give big businesses tax break when it takes a huge percent of our retirement. I'm a senior, and I represent the seniors in a lot of areas in the county, and I see how they struggle just to pay their taxes. And the fact that they pay taxes all their lives, and if they miss one year paying their taxes, they lose everything. If they go to a nursing home, they lose everything. And we're experiencing that in our own family right now with the problems. And I just think that we should keep this in our county and try to keep our taxes lower and support all the small businesses, the restaurants, and the little people that keep our county going. Thank you.
Thank you. The next card I have is Sue Zajic. I'm sorry, I apologize if I mispronounced your last name.
You're my first.
I still apologize.
I thank you for that. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Sue Zajic. I am the Vice President of Marketing for Checkmate Enterprises. Checkmate was established about 20 years ago. We are an engineering consulting firm. We specialize in motorsports industry, which goes to Windshear and all of the other racing we have here in Cabarrus County. We have been consulting in projects across the United States and Canada for over 20 years. We specialize in design and innovation, which is the new growth projects, the innovation, the new ideas, not just the maintain things as they go, but the great new ideas that help expand our whole business base. We were very fortunate to have connected with Windshear about two years ago, and we have a great partnership and relationship with them, and we hope to continue that. This expansion that they're proposing for you will bring a lot of new business into Cabarrus County. Windshear, if you may or may not know, is one of only four of its type in the whole world. So to have one here in Cabarrus County is amazing. That means we've got a huge market that can only go one of four places. Now they're talking about expanding it into a new market niche to go from the race cars to the trucks that bring all of our goods and services into this community. So we've got that. And on someone mentioned earlier, we want to support the hospitality in the restaurants. Everybody that comes into Windshear is going to be out of state, out of town. They have to have someplace to stay. They need food to eat. They may go catch a movie or something else, so that's all going to... stay here in Cabarrus County with this expansion. And of course, I'm another small business. I live and work in Cabarrus County. I pay taxes in Cabarrus County. Having this new project here also lets me keep my work resources here in Cabarrus County. I don't have to go marketing in Tennessee, or South Carolina, or anywhere else. It can all stay here. So I think this growth project can be good for everybody. Keep everything localized in Cabarrus, support us all. And I would urge you to support the growth they've proposed, not just for me, not just for Windshear, but for all of Cabarrus County. Thank you.
Thank you. The next card I have is for Doug Stafford.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. Glad to be with you tonight, and thank you for letting me say a few words about the Windshear project. I know most everyone here, I have not met the new commissioner, but I'm looking forward to it. I am in the hotel business here in Cabarrus County. We have had three hotels up until this past fall, and we sold one of our hotels, but we have two. We've been in business here for about 12 years in the hotel business. And of course, I've been working in the Cabarrus County area for almost 27 years. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of my company, but also behalf of many members of the hospitality industry here in Cabarrus County. And we obviously support the incentive program, not because we like to give away tax money. I can tell you, last year, I wrote checks collectively to the county to the tune of almost $200,000 a year. And I'd love to get some of it back. But quite frankly, we're happy to be paying the tax, because we do very well here. And it's a wonderful county to employ people, and a great county to, to do business in. Our company has hotels, not just in Cabarrus County, but we have hotels in Mecklenburg County. We have hotels in the Charleston, South Carolina area. We're in the process right now of developing a hotel property down in the Durham Chapel Hill area. And we, as a consequence of that, we do business with local governments and state governments outside of North Carolina. I want to speak specifically about the state of South Carolina, because the state of South Carolina has a, a very conservative state government, much like the state government we have here in North Carolina now. It also has very conservative local governments in the areas that we do business. And quite candidly, the state of South Carolina realized back in 2009 and 2010 that the national government was not doing anything to help the national economy. And I think we all can see that. After the Great Recession, we felt probably the biggest economic falloff of our lifetime. My parents used to talk about the Great Depression, but quite candidly, I hope in my lifetime, we don't experience anything quite as bad as they experienced, and not anything, again, as bad as the Great Depression, Great Recession. But the, the efforts that have taken place, particularly in our nation's capital, to bring the economy back have been less than stellar. As you all can see, the, the policies that have been established by our national government have done nothing but choke the economy. We have not experienced anything other than about a 2% or less growth in the gross domestic product on an annual basis since 2009. And what that means is local governments and state governments that are on top of their game have decided it's going to be up to them to build their own economies and not rely on Washington DC. And that's exactly what you see in states like South Carolina, Texas, Georgia, and other states that have taken the local initiative. We do business in Charleston, specifically in Mount Pleasant and in North Charleston. North Charleston is a great example of a community, a local government, that decided to work very closely with their state government, as well as put in, in place some policies and programs locally to attract business. They decided that incentives was a good thing if they could bring new businesses to their community, and, and encourage the expansion of existing businesses, and create new jobs, and thereby create additional tax revenues. Great example of that is the Boeing aircraft operation in North Charleston. Not only has it established a great base for aircraft operations, but it also has brought support businesses into the North Charleston, Dorchester, and Berkeley County areas. And we're seeing the benefits of that. The folks down there are very conservative. They saw no problem with incentives if they could guarantee that the benefits that they were being told they were going to receive would be received. And that's exactly what's happened. So what I'm asking you all tonight is to please consider this package. And keep in mind that if the expansion doesn't take place, the county doesn't really lose anything. You're not losing tax revenue that you currently are receiving. If the expansion occurs, you're going to receive that tax revenue, albeit for the first three years, you're going to receive only 15% of it on an annual basis. After year three, you're going to receive 100% of what you would have been receiving, had you not provided the incentives. But the big question mark you need to ask yourself is this: without a good incentive program, one that is reasonable, and one that's sensible, and one that's attractive to businesses, will you really generate those expansions, or the locations of the new businesses, or the new jobs? In this case, you're looking at seven new jobs, based on the data that I've seen, paying roughly $60,000 a year? That's almost a half million dollars in new wages coming to, to Cabarrus County? I think that's a win, especially if you look at the data and you look at the request, it really does work. And I would ask you to please consider it tonight, not just for me and my company, but for the other people in this, in this county that do business here. The, the benefit to us will be great. Additional business that'll come to my business, as well as the small businesses like restaurants, retail, real estate. It's, you've got a tremendous trickle-down or domino impact. And I ask you to consider it and to please approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. And by the way, I have another yellow card. You don't need to fill out yellow cards once I do this one. I will call on, open the floor up to anybody that would like to speak that's not spoken already. Okay, just to let you know. The last yellow card I have is Robin Diamond. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Poole and fellow commissioners. My name is Robin Diamond, and I serve as the Marketing Director for Jim and Nick's Barbecue here in the Charlotte and Concord area. And on behalf of our owners and our, my fellow teammates, it is my privilege and pleasure to represent Jim and Nick's tonight on behalf of our partners and friends at Windshear Incorporated. You would probably call us the new kids on the block, for we just celebrated our one-year anniversary in Cabarrus County, May 29. However, in this very fast-moving and short 14 months, we have experienced the true meaning of what it means to be a member of this community. Personally, my relationship with Jeff Border and his associate Christine Johnson started the very first month we were open. I remember them sitting at Table 73, and I sharing with them a little history of our restaurant, and our excitement about being a new part of the Cabarrus County community. It didn't take long for Christine and Jeff to begin to utilize our catering services for their test groups, as they would be hosting. As a new small business in this community, we support our partners such as Windshear. Our support from partners such as Windshear Incorporated has been critical. We support approximately 60 employees with an estimated $3 million in revenue this past year, with close to $250,000 of that revenue being generated by our catering sales. Because of this local support, we've been able to give back to our community over $20,000 in goodwill food and in-kind donations to our local schools, churches, and nonprofit organizations. My testimony may be brief, just as our history in Cabarrus County. However, our experience has been nothing but welcoming due to the support of partners such as our friends at Windshear. We would ask on their behalf your utmost consideration for this grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against this particular issue? If you please, will state your name when you come up to the microphone.
My name is Mr. Roland Jordan. I just come to say that we leave it in y'all hands. No, we don't need no more taxes, but we need jobs. We need people to come in and bring jobs, anything to help the community. And I see there's a need there for growth. I know I sit back when S&amp;D Coffee, y'all made, made that good decision to keep S&amp;D Coffee here. And I don't want to sit back and not say nothing for the citizens of Cabarrus County, you know, that we leave it in y'all hands to make the best decision.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak for or against this issue? Yes, sir. Please state your name when you get to the microphone.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Lynn Schu. I'm Chairman of our Board of Education. I hadn't planned on speaking tonight, but I did, I just felt like I had to say something because, you know, we live in a different society now than we've ever lived in before. Back when the old, the old Cannon Mills, and Fieldcrest Cannon, and all the manufacturing, that type thing was here, there was no incentives for them whatsoever. But somehow they made it. Some of them's gone now. But it's, it's like keeping kids in school. You have to be innovative. You have to do things more to keep kids in school than we used to do. We came to school because we knew we had to do that. And it's, it's quite a bit different today in the schools. But when it comes to business, we have to be innovative there as well. And I support the incentive, because I feel like that Cabarrus County is a great place to live. It's a great place to work, provided me and my family a wonderful business for over 20 years. And I think that anything we can do to help the businesses, particularly the new businesses coming in, in this case, Windshear, sure, it's just seven jobs, but that's seven more than we had. And, you know, we're not talking about a lifetime commitment. We're talking three years of tax incentive. Then it'd be right back on the full tax base, and everyone wins. And so, like I said, I hadn't planned on speaking, but I just felt like I had to in support of this incentive. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak for or against this issue? Okay. I would like to read into the minutes the letter which we received from Lynn Scott Safrat, who was not able to be here this evening. It says, dated August the 14th, 2013, "Dear Honorable Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners, this coming Monday, August 19th, 2013, a request for incentives for an existing industry in Cabarrus County will come before you. This is a high-tech company that supports the motorsports industry and is owned by Jean Haas. Windshear is asking for an incentive to help build a 10,000-square-foot building addition for a commercial-scale truck testing facility. This expansion will not only bring seven new, high-paying jobs at $30 per hour, but will have a multiplier effect on the businesses in the community. Windshear has clients come to their location every day that they provide catered meals for, and when they are from out of town, they use our hotels in the area. They use our regional airport, as well as the Charlotte-Douglas International Airport, for travel. Windshear plans to invest their own capital into this $5 million project, but cannot do this totally on their own. They have stated that they will not be able to do the expansion without the city and county's help. Let me strongly encourage you to think about our goals: to provide jobs for our citizens, the growth of our county for the future, and support for this industry that has brought large amounts of revenue to the county. I am asking that you support this project and vote yes to the project incentive request. Sincerely yours, Lynn Scott Safrat, of Castle &amp; Cook, North Carolina LLC." Okay, if there's no one else to speak for or against this, then I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have questions that you need answered, or do you have comments that you would like to make? I will open it up to the commissioners at this time.
Madam Chairman, I would say that in talking about the issue of incentives, the, the one that's before us tonight is probably a fabulous case study of how incentive works. This company, Windshear, came to Cabarrus County, I think about six years ago. Had it not been for our incentive program, they would not have located here. Mr. Borderner was kind enough to, to take me on a tour of the facility last week, and to talk about what they do and what they propose to do. One of the questions that, that I asked him was, why are you here in the first place? His response was that one of the owners of their company had formed a relationship with the folks at our EDC when they helped them to relocate their race shop from Mecklenburg County into Cabarrus County, in the, an industrial park that the city of Conapolis developed. And as a result of that relationship, they decided to take a look at Cabarrus County for the Windshear operation. As was mentioned earlier, since they have located that facility here, we have realized $836,000 in tax revenue from that company. The thing that, that I think maybe that we're remiss on from time to time is not explaining to folks well enough how these incentives work. Had we not granted them that incentive to locate here, then that $836,000 that they've paid to Cabarrus County in the form of property taxes would be funds that would not be available for us to use to meet the needs of the citizens. If we wanted to raise that $836,000 to pay for, for all the things that, that we pay for, some mandated, others not, the only place that we would have to go and get that money would be to raise the tax rate on individual taxpayers. So I, I think very correctly view these projects as one of the best ways that we can keep the tax rate low. I think if we can encourage more investments of this nature into our local economy, that will assist us in, in keeping our tax rate under control. And that does not even include the benefits from the jobs that occur. You know, we've heard folks talk about the number of hotel and motel nights that are generated by this operation. We've, we've heard from the folks that do the catering for these people that come in and test. That doesn't include what these folks, and Mr. Borderner told me, that a lot of these companies come in, may stay here for a week to do their testing. When they leave in the evenings, I'm sure that they dine in our restaurants, they shop in our shops, visit Concord Mills and other places throughout the county. So you can't tie down the, the total benefit of everything that they contribute to our economy. Kind of, you know, the, I was pretty impressed with the $836,000 that they've already paid to us in taxes. Looking, trying to kind of project that out over the next 25 years, realizing that we, that the things will fluctuate over the years as far as depreciation and those kind of things. But a very rough figure that I was able to come up with was approximately $5 million that they will pay directly to Cabarrus County in the form of, of property taxes. That does not include the taxes that they may pay to the city of Concord. I look at this as a win-win situation. Somebody sent me an email yesterday saying that they didn't think we should give money to, to businesses. And I think that's what people don't understand. If this expansion does not go through, then we will never realize any revenue whatsoever from, from this, from this project, other than what we currently are. So if we turn this, this grant proposal down tonight, we will actually be giving away $15,750 of revenue that we can potentially realize over the next three years, and then certainly a much larger amount for each year thereafter. So I'm, I'm very much in favor of this, and I encourage our board to approve it. Thank you.
Commissioner Reisman?
I think we all would agree that, you know, jobs are the number-one issue that's facing Cabarrus County, you know, our state and our nation. I don't think that any of us have, I don't think any of us would disagree with that, that jobs are the most important. You know, we have seen, you know, a sluggish economy. We've seen, you know, jobs, people being laid off. We've seen jobs going away. However, you know, we have to realize that there are a lot of policies that affect the job growth and the free enterprise system. And that's from Washington DC to our state government, which I believe is headed in the right direction now. But having one of the highest corporate income tax rates in the southeast, one of the highest gas taxes in the southeast, that's what's hindering business. We, as a small business owner myself, I can see firsthand how the burden of government actually hurts business. You know, if we were to, to address some of these issues, rather than our local governments having to absorb this sort of, this sort of endeavor of tax refunds, you know, we, we would be much better off. The, the issue with the jobs go far beyond what we're doing in Cabarrus County. And, you know, we could try to, to say that we will see benefit from this, from this incentive grant being passed. However, I think most of us would agree that we can't see any direct benefit. If we could see a direct benefit from a tax incentive, I think most people wouldn't argue that's okay. However, whenever we, you know, do not see a direct benefit, if this is supposed to keep the tax rate lower for the citizens, then why is the tax rate steadily increased? So I can't see where that, that helps. The hotel occupancy tax, you know, we have the individuals that come in and stay in the hotel, hotel rooms, and they pay the hotel occupancy tax. This board does not get to see any of that funds. It goes directly to our Visitors Bureau. So we do not see any direct benefit from those hotel rooms. It goes straight to the, to the Tourism Board to decide what they so choose with that. And- And, you know, if a company is dependent upon this tax incentive from the city and the county, then this subsidy should not determine that. As a free enterprise, as a business, you're going to decide what's best for your business and what you should do to expand and create new jobs. If you're dependent upon this subsidy, then, you know, it shouldn't, it should not determine your business decision.
Commissioner Burge?
I'm in favor of creating jobs for Cabarrus County. But you keep talking about green energy. I think coming down the road a while ago, coming over here, the trucking industry company that they, the stimulus money was all put into to create so many jobs, they filed for bankruptcy today, that Mr. Obama put millions of dollars into it. You see all the others, it's been, money's been thrown away, the stimulus money. And to pick winners and losers for the government to do that is totally not the government's responsibility. If you want to pay your taxes well and good, Cabarrus County is a good county to live in. Our area, our people, our school system should be incentive enough for people to come here and want to do business in this county. I don't think we would have to pay them to come. Far as I'm concerned, this is just legalized extortion. I don't care who, how many judges said it was legal, I don't care how many lawyers said it was legal. Far as I'm concerned, it's illegal, unfair to the rest of the taxpayers, the rest of the businesses in Cabarrus County. Now, if you want to give every business in Cabarrus County 85% of his taxes back, I'll vote for that. But I'm not going to vote to give it to one individual company.
Commissioner Osterich?
Chairwoman Poole, if you've been reading the Independent Tribune this week, you'll recognize this as the hot seat. I also, I appreciate Commissioner Morris taking me out to see Mr. Boardner at Windshear. We had a great visit on Friday, and I think your facility is absolutely top-notch. It is a tremendous facility. I appreciate you doing business in Cabarrus County very much. We are blessed to have you here, to be honest with you. I went and met with the Cabarrus Jobs Now people on Friday, and I've heard from many of them and had a great conversation with them about tax incentives. And I've talked to other people about their feelings about that. And I really truly believe it's my job to be as informed about this issue as I can be. And so I tried to hear both sides of it. As I continued to talk to people, there was one fact that continued to pop out in my mind. The fact of the matter is that our continually increasing tax rate is what's stifling job growth in Cabarrus County. Now, if you go back to June 2012, the majority of this tax board, I mean, the majority of this board raised the taxes 10%, even though we had had surpluses for the two years before that, and I expect we'll have a surplus for the year after that. Now, if you sit down and look at the numbers on this incentive, you will find that all we are doing with this incentive is giving Windshear back the 63 cent tax rate. We are simply giving them back the old tax rate. And I'll prove it to you. Windshear's value right now is about $32 million. This will be about $5 million. So there's a total of about $37 million that they'll pay taxes on. At a 70 cent tax rate with the incentive, they will pay about $690,000. If we don't give any incentive and we just left the tax rate exactly where it was, at 63 cents per hundred, they would pay $700,000, which means there is approximately 1% difference between giving them this incentive and if we'd just left things the way that they were. Now, not only that, but if this is really about jobs, if we had left it at 63 cents per hundred, when we got to year four, their incentive would be out, and they'd be paying 100% of their tax. If we had left the tax rate the way that it was, Windshear would benefit by $25,000 a year, under a 63 cent tax rate as opposed to the 70 cent tax rate. Now, if this is really about jobs, our companies need money to hire people. And I suspect that if you ask Mr. Boardner, $25,000 would go a long way towards making that an eighth job. Now, our system that we have set up here completely wastes our economic resources. Instead of the government setting a growth tax rate and allowing every business to decide for itself when it was ready to expand, when it was ready to hire more people, when it was ready to invest in its business based on its own business model, now they have to come to us and ask for permission to get these incentives. And Mr. Boardner's spending his time here politicking with us, and there's a lot of transaction costs for him here. After he gets the incentive, we go out, he has to submit to several audits and things like that. That's a waste of his resources as well. Now, most businesses and taxpayers in Cabarrus County can never qualify for an incentive, so they are simply stuck paying the increased rate. Now, what I want is for government to get out of the way. I want government to get out of the way and let all of our small businesses run themselves the way that they want to run themselves. If it makes sense for a business to expand, they'll do it. If it makes sense for a homeowner to add on to his or her house, they will do it. Now, they shouldn't have to come to their government and ask for permission to do something. Mr. Boardner, when I went to your facility last week, I saw real brilliance. I asked you, I couldn't even comprehend how you planned this facility because there was so much ingenuity involved in this. I mean, it really was one of a kind in this country. And it amazes me that you had the confidence and the ability to plan that. I think our policies right now are getting in your way, and they are stifling your ability to grow. At this time, instead of unshackling one business, I think it's a better policy to unshackle all of our small businesses. Now, I don't want to fix the system for one business and not fix it for everybody. So, Mr. Boardner, I will give you my word that I will try my best to bring our tax rate back down to 63 cents, so that you will get the equivalent of this incentive. That way, your business gets the same incentive that's being proposed, and every other business in this community gets the same incentive, and every citizen in this community gets the same incentive. Now, look at this from a factual perspective. By lowering our tax rate for everyone, that is what is going to create jobs. If we lower our tax rate, it actually reduces an expenditure for business. That's going to give them more money to hire people. If we lower our tax rate, it will give every citizen more money to go out and spend in our businesses, which is going to give them more revenue to hire people. Mr. Boardner, I do want to help you, but at this time, I need to help everybody if I help you, and I appreciate you very much. Thank you.
Okay, I would like to say that I do think this was a project that we should support. They are good citizens in Cabarrus County. They're excellent investment, what, as far as the county goes, the investment is the important thing. With them doing the investment, we would have a net gain of taxes immediately to the county, and that net gain would continue for a very long time, because it's a facility, it's a building that's going to be here and not something that can just get up and walk away. So I would be in favor of us supporting this grant for Windshear and for all the businesses that they support. I would like to make a note that of the occupancy tax, 10% of that does come to the county. And we have discussed that in our budget and ways that those funds could potentially be used and are currently being used to offset other revenues as far as county, about items that the county attends to. So, at this time, commissioners, if there's no other comments, I would accept a motion concerning this item.
Madam Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve the incentive grant request from Windshear and authorize the county manager and county attorney to finalize that agreement.
Okay, I have a motion. I will second that motion. So at this time, we have a motion to approve the grant requested. All those in favor say aye? Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion fails. I think I heard you say aye. Did I not?
I said...
I just want to make sure I hear you.
I'm opposed.
Okay, I just want to make sure I could hear his, I wanted to make sure I could hear you. That motion fails two to three. So again, concerning this request, is there a motion to come before the board?
I would move to deny the application as presented.
Hey, I have a motion to deny the request, and I have a second. All those in favor of denying the request, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No. That motion passes three to two. So unfortunately, your request has been denied. The next item that we have is the 2012-2013 Home Caper Annual Report. We do need to hold a public hearing. Ms. Safrat, do you want to address that first?
Yes, ma'am. I'll give you a quick...
Thank you.
...explanation of the program for the viewing audience. This is a program for single-family rehab. We do focus on elderly and disabled in an effort to keep them in their homes longer. We did struggle a little bit last year with getting qualified applicants, but we have found a few and are processing those. We have one underway. We did spend $858 during the fiscal year last year with advertising and for public hearings and for the, excuse me, the lead work and all. So we do have some projects underway at this time.
Thank you. If we can get the doors closed, that would be very helpful, I think, so that we can hear better. Thank you. Okay, at this time, I will open this item up for a public hearing for the 2012-2013 Home Caper Annual Report. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this particular item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, tonight, we are just to receive the report. We don't have any other actions to take. Okay? The next item that we have is revision to Chapter 78, Article III, Code of Ordinances. Jonathan Marshall is here to address that with us, and then we do need to call for a public hearing. Mr. Marshall?
This is a revision to Chapter 78, Article III of your Code of Ordinances. The Board of Commissioners adopt, in this particular case, it's the Sewer Use Ordinance. This is a parallel ordinance that the county adopts along with the Water and Sewer Authority of Cabarrus County, and in essence is a pre-treatment ordinance that governs how waste should be pre-treated when it could potentially be damaging to the overall treatment system. The Water and Sewer Authority has made changes to their regulations, and we're, as a partner with them, we are asked to make the same changes to the ordinance that you adopt. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, let me do the public hearing first, and then we'll open it up for questions from the commissioners. So at this time, I will open the public hearing to consider, to talk about revision of Chapter 78, Article III of the Code of Ordinances. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Marshall concerning this item?
What is Chapter 78, Article III?
That is the sewer, it is referred to, that's the utility section. Chapter 78 is, Article III is specifically the Sewer Use Ordinance. So it's an ordinance that deals with, in particular with industries that may have something within their waste stream that could be damaging to the overall treatment process. It deals with how that's pre-treated, to either remove it from that waste stream before it gets to the main treatment plant, or how it can be treated to lessen its effect on the treatment plant.
Does the county treat it, or does the business treat it?
The business treats it onsite. So the pre-treatment is that they would treat it onsite, and then it would enter the waste stream and be ultimately treated at the, one of the two main treatment plants in the county operated by the Water and Sewer Authority.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yes, sir?
Ms. Marshall, what has been the response from businesses that use these services with respect to this revision to the ordinance?
I have not heard from any of the businesses that use this. And typically, this is entered into, the Water and Sewer Authority actually issues an agreement to treat, and they would look at the type of waste stream, and they would negotiate with the business or discuss with them what pre-treatment would need to take place. The alternative, because treatment is a biological process, if it's potentially damaging to the waste stream, is that they would, Water and Sewer Authority would not agree to take that waste without this pre-treatment. So I think it really benefits both organizations. It allows them to get waste treatment for the flow, but it also removes those things that could harm the treatment system itself.
One other question that I had for you. Under Section 8.2 Civil Penalties, it looks like the executive director can assess a civil penalty of up to $25,000 with some intentional misconduct, but up to $10,000 with really no intent at all, and that's per violation per day. That high level of civil penalty concerns me somewhat. Is that something that we see regularly in things like this? Or, you know, what is that penalty in relation to what the companies are paying for these permits and things like that?
I'm not familiar with any violations that have required that kind of a fine. The executive director in this case is the executive director of the Water and Sewer Authority. I would certainly be happy to get information for you if he's had to assess any fines. The reason why it is so high, so punitive, is because of the damage it can cause to the overall treatment, and that would affect everybody who is tied into the waste treatment system itself.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other questions? Based on the summary in our notes, just to reinforce, the Water and Sewer Authority of Cabarrus County has made changes to their Sewer Use Ordinance to include new federal and state regulations. This ordinance allows WASC to implement their pre-treatment program for wastewater. There is an agreement between WASC and Cabarrus County that requires the county to adopt an S U O that is the same as WASC. That ordinance is included in Chapter 78, Article III of the Code of Ordinances, and therefore, we have the revised text. So that's where this is coming from. So if there are no other comments at this time, I would accept a motion to adopt the ordinance amending Chapter 78, Article III, utilities of the Code of Ordinances.
So move.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next, I'd like to welcome Anna Yan. Anna's here, there you are. Welcome from Cardinal Innovations Healthcare Solutions. Anna will be doing a presentation from Cardinal Innovations Healthcare Solutions for the Fourth Quarter Fiscal Year 2013 Dashboard Report for Mental Health, Intellectual Development, Disabilities, and Substance Abuse Services. And you are required to make reports to us.
I am.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we're glad that you're here.
Thank you. This is the fiscal year to date for 2012-2013. This is funding county dollars, state dollars, and Medicaid dollars for individuals in Cabarrus County. The first report is where county dollars are spent in Cabarrus County. These are crisis services, so these are your highest need of individuals in the county. Crisis Recovery Center is what keeps individuals within the county instead of having to go to a state hospital, so they're able to stay close to their community, to their therapist, to family members, where they can recover quickly. Your Mobile Crisis provides that support in the community, psychological support and forensic screenings. There is medication assistance, advanced access, interpreting service, emergency after hours. These are services that provide that additional extra hours. So instead of your typical providers maybe closing at 5:00, they keep their doors open until 8:00 PM for folks to be able to walk in and get emergency services as needed. This report shows the number of consumers served by Medicaid and state dollars. The only thing I would caution is on June 2013, even though that number goes down, we have a 90-day lag for claims to be submitted. So all the providers had not submitted their claims at the time of this report. That's why the number is down. As you see that report with, in the coming quarter, that number goes back up. Innovations is for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. These are those highest at risk of being placed in an institution for individuals with developmental disabilities. It is a high-cost service because it is long-term care and for those at highest of need. So you tend to see a higher list of folks waiting for that service simply because of the dollars that it takes to support them. For individuals with developmental disabilities... For individuals with developmental disabilities, we do maintain a registry of those interested in housing within the county. For those maybe waiting on a particular home, so not necessarily that there are not vacancies within the home, but it is a preference and choice for individuals that are waiting. Adult Day Vocational Program, what we call ADVP, is your workshop setting in Cabarrus County. Those are state dollars. Those state dollars have not increased for several years. In fact, we've seen a decrease in those dollars. So unfortunately, those that are waiting for that service, there are not additional funding, and you see that number stay steady. Number of consumers served by each service category, these are your community services. You have outpatient, like individual and group therapy, your residential services, community services, what we call intensive in-home, where therapists go into the home, your emergency services, innovations, and inpatient, which is your hospital psychiatric care. And then your expense amounts per community service. This graph just shows a comparison from two fiscal years. These are the number of individuals served per community service. Your dollar amount in comparison for fiscal year 2011 and '12 to 2012 and '13, as well as your crisis services. So your Crisis Recovery Center and Mobile Crisis, which actually, they go out to the home and assess the situation without someone having to go into an emergency department or into a facility. This is just the number of people. With innovations, gives a comparison of those served and the dollar amount per month. And again, this is because it is long-term care for those highest of need, those numbers do stay pretty static. Every year, we do receive a few slots from the state in order to bring additional individuals into that funding. And the last information is the top 10 providers within Cabarrus County and the total paid claims, as well as for your largest provider in Cabarrus County, which is Daymark Recovery Centers. And they provide your outpatient services, your individual, group therapy, and the number of consumers that were served within the last quarter. Any questions?
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
One question, looking at the top 10 providers' number served and the top 10 providers' total paid claims, I would think they would be the same, but I see that the top provider is further down the list. Is that because of the level of services, or?
That's correct. Daymark is primarily a mental health and substance addiction provider. Those are, those tend to be short-term services. So you're serving more people, but not as long.
I see.
Independent Opportunities is an intellectual and developmental disabilities provider, as well as Innovations. So they are providing services on more of a long-term basis, which are receiving those additional funds.
Would that be the same reason that Northeast Medical Center is number two, but they don't appear on the list of total paid claims because of the short, shorter periods of time?
That's correct. Northeast is also a mental health and substance addiction provider, so it's more of a short-term service.
I see. Thank you.
Certainly.
Any other questions?
I would like to ask, well, being the liaison to the Cardinal Innovations, I'm fairly familiar with most of the information here, but what is the Murdoch Center? I'm not, under the total, top 10 total paid claims, the last one, what is, I'm not familiar with that.
Murdoch Center is a state developmental center, but they also specialize in those with autism. So for individuals that are unable to be served in the community, they may need a short-term stay at the state developmental center at Murdoch for then intensive treatment so they can move back into the community.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, next item that we have, Commissioners, Cabarrus County Schools. And we have Lynn Whitkey is here. I also want to recognize, is Lynn Shue still here? He stepped out the chair. And we also have Blake Keier here, who is the vice chair of the Cabarrus County Board of Education. I don't see any other school board members here tonight, so I did want to recognize you. And Mr. Whitkey presented this to us concerning Web Field, which is the field behind the Glenn Center and the City of Concord purchasing that. Jason, to give you some information, when the school, Cabarrus County Schools or Conaples City Schools, if it is in Cabarrus County, chooses or has an opportunity to sell any of their property, they must offer it to us first. So we can either buy the property, or they may, we may refuse to buy the property, which allows them then to sell the property to someone else. And that's what's before us if we are being asked if we want to buy the property for the amount, or if we want to waive our right to purchase the property and allow, in this case, the City of Concord to buy the property. So do you want to talk a little bit about the actual property?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, good evening. The property is roughly eight and a half acres of land. It is occupied by a number of structures and several ball fields used by the community overall. And the tenant of the property has been the City of Concord for, well, for a long time, since 1949, as I understand it. And we do have a lease that pay a dollar per year for the right to use the land. And there, all of the improvements, as we can find and determine from the records, have been made by the City of Concord as far as the physical improvements, buildings, swimming pool, et cetera, fields and lights. And the city really came to us, they, one of the big things is they need to replace the lighting system, the big tall, high-mass lights. And before they made that sort of investment, which is several hundred, a thousand dollars, they wanted to know, one, were we going to either continue the lease, or two, would we consider selling the property and allowing them to develop it long-term? And our board thought about it and decided that sale was proper, that the school, the school in terms of the long-term use for the Glenn Center was such that we would not really be able to use the fields or the buildings where they're located. And as a result, and I will also say that the agreement, any agreement we have with the City of Concord in the sale would allow the school and its students to have first right of use during daytime or schooltime hours. And that's something that the city has agreed to as well. And one other thing, I'm sure that I made very clear, we're in the process of designing a stormwater replacement project at the Colton Webb School Facility. That's a large, it's a, I think it's 44-inch now, and it's going to be increased even larger to address the stormwater runoff in the area. And it serves a larger portion of the city than just our property. Right now, it sort of goes underneath one of the buildings and is failing badly. We've repaired it a number of times, it's come to the point where it can't be repaired any longer. It needs to be replaced. The city's been working with us to figure out a way to get, to run it, not under the building, but out down Spring Street and then come around the building on the northwest side. To do that, there were properties that the city owned that interfered with that process. So the city is going to, and they've offered that as part of this transaction, to allow us to take ownership of the property that we need to run that additional line, so. Be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Commissioner Burge, I believe you were the one that asked to have this placed on new business. Do you have any questions?
Well, my question is, does the school board ever plan on doing anything with old Concord High School? Might they need a few acres of land down the road somewhere?
I think that there has been discussion, obviously, there's a grand old auditorium in the building that the school district would like to see revitalized and reused. As part of that process, the thought is that at some point in the fairly near future, it's hoped, that school may look at becoming, or we may look at it becoming a, what we call a fine arts magnet school. So it would be a smaller school, but it would house fine arts, such as music, dance, and many other related arts programs that could be housed in that facility. So we're looking at that right now. We don't have a time factor in there in terms of when that would occur, but we would not, we would not see it as being as large as it once was, but we would also see it as being supportive of and in use with the existing auditorium facility that's there. The use of the land, as I say, and where it's located with relationship to the school, does not appear to be a benefit to us at this time.
How far is it away from school?
It's not only, I mean, it's not in terms of distance as a crow flies, it's not all that far. It's substantially below the level of the school. In terms of gaining access to that property, we'd either have to put an elevator in for barrier-free accessibility, or a very, very, very long ramp, because it's probably, and I don't have the elevation data, but I'm guessing it's about
Didn't Concord High School use that when it was a high school?
It did at that time, yes, sir. ADA has changed a lot of that.
It just seemed like you're selling land that you may one day need. It'd be better off to continue the lease agreement with the city rather than sell the land, looks to me like. But, you know, that's it to y'all.
I would offer, and I know the question came up before, as to what the land, what the sale of the, what the dollars from the sale realized would be used for, and the thought would be that it would be put towards renovation, at least the start of the renovation of the auditorium.
How long has it been since that auditorium was redone?
That's before my time. It's been a long time. They occasionally use it for internal programs within the school, but in terms of large group gatherings, we haven't done that for many, many years.
Mr. Whitkey, when I looked at the appraisal, it looked like the appraised value for the land was $940,000 as developed, and the sale price here to the City of Concord is $210,000. Can you explain the discrepancy there? Or not necessarily discrepancy, but the difference?
Surely, I believe, let me find the page for you. Yes.
It's on page 37, page 41.
Right, I'm going to take you to page 34 if I could. And there, it talks a little bit about, you know, some of the other values in the area. It talks about the fact that in some cases, property values at one point were as much as $40,000 in that general vicinity. That's not what they've been selling for recently, and they give a list of four or five properties that have all sold substantially below that value.
I think page 34 deals with the cost approach of valuation with respect to the land only and ignores all the improvement on it. The appraiser said that he rejected that approach and went with a replacement approach and concluded that the value was $940,000 because it had so many improvements on it. And it, one of the benefits that we've gotten over the years in terms of leasing it to the City of Concord for dollars is that they would make the improvements, and it seems like the school board is selling it without realizing any of the value of those improvements. So essentially, we've let the city have that property for decades with no, with no rent collected, and we're not going to get any credit for the value of the improvement, so.
As I may have not stated, the city's position on that is that they are the ones, the city is the one entity that's made the improvements, that the county is not, the school board has not made those improvements. So the value, in their mind, is the value that they invested in the property and in turn should be returned to them.
Sure, but we have ground leases like that all the time. I mean, you can go to a CVS and they have a 99-year lease on the property, and the owner of the property owns the improvement when they leave. I'm not saying that as a county I want to purchase this land, but I am saying that as a school board, I am concerned that something that's been valued at $940,000 is being sold for $210,000.
I think it's, from the board's point of view, and I don't want to speak directly for the board, but I think the general feeling was is that we want to be good neighbors and good partners with the city. There are many things that we do together, obviously, and we think that because the monies were from the city that originally purchased and made, made the improvements, that this is a reasonable thing to do.
So you'll still be good neighbors with the lease, won't you?
Yes, that's true, sir.
Any other comments?
Speaking as a taxpayer on both sides of this issue, both the City of Concord as well as Cabarrus County, and having benefited from Cabarrus County Schools, you know, I think it's important for us to realize that the school system and we as citizens have recognized great benefit from the investments that the city has made on that property over the years, and I feel quite comfortable that we will continue to do that. I think you said since 1942?
49, I believe.
Forty-nine? Yeah, so certainly my entire lifetime, so I feel totally, and of course, the only question before us is whether we want to buy it or not.
That is correct.
Yeah, and I'm saying we don't, but I am very, very supportive of efforts to revive that facility and make it something useful to the school system and the rest of the community, and I have every confidence in our elected school board members to make good judgments in that regard, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I can certainly understand where the city, you know, has put in funds over the years to update the property and to maintain, maintain the property as it is, so I certainly, I understand the reduced value and, you know, to coordinate good relationships with the City of Concord. If, you know, the school board decides that they do want to sell the land, or if they want to continue with the purchase, I mean, with the lease agreement, then that's certainly left up to the Cabarrus County School Board. But, you know, as county commissioner and from the county government, I would say I don't think we're interested in purchasing the property.
Thank you.
My parents graduated from that facility when it was Concord High School. And when those fields were used, and I stated, I've had many people comment to me that they didn't know why we were spiders, and so I'll say that again, because they were, that was a gridiron of trivia. It's called Web Field because it was named after a superintendent, I believe it was superintendent, could have been the principal there. Mr. Webb and spiders play it on, or spiders are on a web, and therefore, Concord High School are the spiders. Having been a student myself at that particular facility in my junior high school years, seventh, eighth, and ninth grade for me back in the day, and my daughter attended that school as a sixth grader the last year that it was in use as a middle school. Those particular facilities are, the only way to access them by a car would be to go around the block. There is a pathway down to the fields. You would go by the pool that the city has invested in. The only true use that I saw of the, of Web Field back in the day was Astro Eggs, if anybody remembers that science project where you had to take a raw egg and find a way to protect it as they, as my science teacher hurled mine off of the building down there and smashed it very easily on the concrete steps or the concrete bleachers. I believe the bleachers are in disrepair at this point in time, and the city may need to do some other efforts there, too. So it's been used for baseball, it's been used for football, and there's another softball field there. I don't see any reason that the county needs to own the property based on the plans of the Board of Education. I don't see that they're going to use that currently, what's used at that facility, there's some offices there, their technology is there, and there is the Opportunity School, and none of which house any athletic teams that would need to use those fields. So I am fine with, if that's your decision to sell the property and to use it to renovate the auditorium. I do not believe your question about the auditorium. I think it looks about the same as when I went to school there. I won't give the year, but that's been a few years ago, so I don't think it's any different. It will take a substantial amount of money. It is a beautiful auditorium. It will take a substantial amount of money to bring it up.
Before 2000, was it?
It was a little bit before 2000, thank you. You're very kind. Since I'm now a senior citizen, you're being very kind to me, I appreciate that. So I am perfectly fine with if that's the Board of Education's choice and to use the funds there, I think that's probably a good use of choice, use of the fund. So the motion before us, Commissioners, is to refuse Cabarrus County's right to purchase the Web Field property and to approve the sale of Web Field property by Cabarrus County Schools Board of Education to the City of Concord for the amount of $210,000, and under the terms that the proceeds will be utilized for Cabarrus County Schools' capital improvements as determined by the Board of Education.
You're waiving
We are waiving our rights, yes.
What they decide to do in the end.
Right. That is true. He's already said that's what they want to do, so. It would have to be used for capital because it's selling capital. It would have to be used for capital because it's selling capital. So it does have to be used for capital, that's the only part of that. So, do I have a motion?
Does it move?
To waive our rights?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion to waive our rights. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion, there is a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item before us, Kyle Billifer is here. I think, there you are, Kyle. This has to do with service trucks and SUV bids.
Good evening. Public bid for four service trucks, one dump truck, and three SUVs was advertised, and a total of three companies submitted sealed bids on the various vehicles. Based on the outcome of those bids, it is recommended to purchase four service trucks, one dump truck, and one SUV from Hillbush Ford for a total amount of $170,000 and $150. Motion to approve the bid award and authorize the county manager to execute the contract between Hillbush Ford and Cabarrus County for the amount of $170,150, subject to review and revision by a county attorney. We solicited, obviously, we advertised publicly, contacted five different vendors, and received three bids from three different vendors.
Commissioner Burridge, were you the one that asked to put this on new business?
Yeah, I was.
Okay, would you like to make any statements? Turn the microphone up, please.
Replacement vehicles, correct, except for one of them?
No, there are, there is one replacement vehicle, and that is for a grounds maintenance truck. It's a 1999 grounds maintenance truck. The bottom of it is rusted out. It does not meet our mileage criteria, however, based on the safety and the amount of rusting out of underneath the truck, mainly since it's sat in the parks and worked in the parks for the past 14 years, that is the one that is the replacement. The other one are new additions. There is a dump truck that we are purchasing that is replacing a smaller dump trunk. We no longer have the use we need to haul a larger amount. It consistently breaks the hydraulic system that's on there by what we're hauling. So I, you would call that a replacement, but it's actually a different truck, a different size that's being brought in.
How about the SUVs? You were going to get three and you only getting one?
We bid three because the customer that we were bidding those SUVs for was not in complete agreement about what they needed, whether it be ability to tow, winch, tow and winch, or none of the above. They actually went with the mid-package. They'll be able to tow up to 5,000 pounds, but no winch.
So that one, salt and water, going to use that one vehicle?
Yes, that's exactly who you're talking about.
Okay.
Any other questions concerning this item?
Do we have any way of avoiding this purchase by sharing vehicles or anything like that? As I talked to Mr. Bordenor about, I do think that our expenditures have gotten a little bit out of whack with respect to what the people's expectations are, and, you know, I am concerned about making capital improvements here and buying new vehicles and things like that. Is there anything that we can do to avoid the purchase of these, any of these vehicles?
In all of these cases, I would say no. However, we do, before the vehicles go to a surplus to sell the remaining vehicles, they are typically offered out to locations that can deal with a heavier mileage and be used rather than a full-on replacement. In the past, these trucks would go to use at the arena instead of buying a new truck, or what's at Elmalomax Farm is actually a twice-used truck, just because we know it's not on the road and handling any type of hauling or safety, it's at one location. We do look at that for all of our vehicles that we surplus in any way. In fact, some are kept as spares, the ones that we deem roadworthy are kept as spares, so when you drop your vehicle off for a 5,000-mile change, we can give you something to get you back on the road if you don't have time to wait around, because obviously, we have to service emergency vehicles first. So some of our non-emergency clients tend to be sitting around for, you know, 30 minutes, and if a couple ambulances roll in, it could be two hours. So we typically keep those spare vehicles. In this case, I would say there's nothing else that we have out in the county that could replace these vehicles.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have before us a request to, accept a motion to approve the bid award and authorize the county manager to execute the contract between Cabarrus County and Hillbush Ford for the amount of $170,150, subject to review or revision by the county attorney. Do I have a motion?
Does it move?
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Kyle. Okay, next we have a discussion concerning the establishment of a phone policy for economic services. Ben Rose is here to talk to us from DSS.
Good evening. This is a continuation of some of the discussion that we had with you at the work strategy session. We appreciate your asking for more information. I was thinking back a few years ago when we used to complain about our old FSIS system and how we could do so much better, and I don't think there's a soul in our building right now that wouldn't want to go back to that system right now. NCFAST continues to be a challenge to this day. I know you guys have experienced some of that with clients and citizens contacting you. What our purpose was at the, at the work session was to talk about a strategy to help our workers try to get caught up on the cases. I would definitely preface that any strategy that we have before you is not a overnight solution to the issues that we have. It's just simply a, another tool to help our workers try to deal with the huge task that's ahead of them in terms of getting cases caught back up and caught back to speed. But at the session, we did talk about a phone policy with you and realizing, we wanted to bring that to you because we realized the customer service impact that that would have and the, you know, the anger that it might create with customers that we serve in our building if we literally shut down our phones to that division for a period of time each day. Phone calls, we average about 12,000 to 13,000 phone calls within this division a month. So they do take a lot of time, and they are important to us, and we try to deal with everyone as best we can, but it obviously takes away from the work at hand as well, too. We have, you know, X number of staff, and when you get 12,000 calls a month, they can, you know, it takes away from their time. So the idea behind the phone policy was, again, to create administrative time that they could work, actually work these cases. So we would literally shut the phones down to this division. We would not take voice messages, we would not, you know, deal with issues at that time so that they could actually do the work at hand. And with that, you had requested to get a little additional information on a couple of other strategies, primarily temporary staffing. Would temporary staffing be able to help? And we included in your packet, hopefully you have in your packet, some information regarding that. There were two primary temporary staffing issues that we looked at. One, of course, being with a company that we work with locally, Core Staff. We've used them on a tremendous amount in the past to help us with temporary staffing, and that we have a set rate, working with HR, we've had a, have a set rate with them. So we projected, at the ideal situation, being six temporary staff to help process cases or help at least support the workers while they could process cases would be, for a six-month period, would be a little over $100,000. And that is, you know, would be an additional cost that we did not budget. We do have temporary staff in our budget, but those staff were budgeted to help deal with the Medicaid conversion that we're going to get ready to go through in October, which is another concern that we have going forward. So that would be a cost using a staffing agency. The other one that we did vet, and there should be some further information from them, is called Vanguard. Vanguard is a specialized company that actually deal with social services staffing, and they have been promoting support to county social service agencies across the state and helping them deal with these issues. They have pros and cons. One of the cons is they cost more, as you can probably tell in the packet. And in addition to that, we're unsure of their staffing level and capacity at this time. Where Core Staff would be a situation where we would bring people in, we could, we would train them ourselves and then get them up and going and use them, probably use about a month for training and then get them up and going for about a six-month period. Vanguard has not necessarily promised they have trained staff right at hand, which is part of the purpose that you go to them for, is that hopefully you're getting trained staff. So if they don't have trained staff, we're still trying to get from them, would we have to do that training? Would they do that training? And how would that operate? So Vanguard is an option, but it's probably of the two, from a temporary staffing standpoint, I think we would probably prefer the Core Staff option. The overtime option was one that was suggested by our staff. We tried to get feedback from our staff and helping us develop strategies and solutions to these problems, and that is one we haven't really vetted as much as well, but I would have a feeling that would be even more costly. And quite frankly, while I appreciate that, that offer from them, I think we are working them so hard right now that, you know, I think it would be better to look at a phone policy and/or additional temporary staff. But that's what we came up with from, based on what you would like, so we're here to answer any questions and help you process this as best we can.
Okay, commissioners, questions or comments concerning this issue?
How many cases are you behind now?
I'll deflect the truth.
We have 3,000 recertifications that we're behind that are pre-August, and we have over 1,000 applications. So we're behind at least 4,000 actions, that's not including August, and that's another 2,000-plus actions.
And you got how many people working on it?
I have got 21 food and nutrition workers who are dedicated solely to food and nutrition, which is what we're talking about. And then we're talking about training our call center staff through the phone policy. They're already in training now because even if we don't do the shutting the phones off, we're teaching them through our universal process to do other actions. So we'll have another 12 workers dedicated, and by January, the state will be pushing out NCFAST across all programs, and then by February or March, we'll be, everybody will be doing that. But our issue right now is the work currently in the NCFAST program is not allowing us to get the work done.
What's the average time it takes to do one application?
Right now, several hours because of the system. Eventually, it's supposed to take less than an hour. Right now, the system's not working to our benefit.
Whose fault is that? State, federal, or?
They would argue that it's a combination. We would argue that it's their fault.
Sounds like we ought to fire the whole bunch and start over.
Well, we don't have that option, but we would love some support at that level to have that happen.
And there's definitely, I will say this, I know that the state, I believe, last week, last Friday or maybe Thursday, they had a conference call with legislators in the Department of Health and Human Services, because this is, again, this is not just Cabarrus County, this is statewide, and this issue is really hitting the fan in Raleigh now, and they actually received a threatening email based on North Carolina FAST in Raleigh. And it's, I think they understand that we're taking the heat.
Did they not know it was going to happen?
That's-
I mean, you changed the whole system.
Yeah.
Makes no sense to do that and leave all these people in the dark on what's going on, and they can't get their benefits, which, you know, some of them probably will be going to work anyway. But I know, I've had, I don't know how many calls people, I hadn't got, I hadn't got no benefits since June. I got two small children, single mother, what am I going to do? You know, what are they going to do?
Well, we've been working with food pantries, but today I saw an article, Rowan County is in the same boat, and their food pantries are bare.
Right.
And that's sort of what we're dealing with in this county, too, which is why we really feel like shutting down our system or doing something to really attack this problem as best we can, because we know the families need their benefits. You know, sure, there are some families who might ought not to receive the benefits, but there are plenty who, they, this is a supplemental program, and their families aren't getting, you know, their children have special needs, or their grandmother in the home is a diabetic, or, you know, there are issues in the family that they need those special nutritional things that we can't provide in the pantry.
But how is shutting down the phone system going to benefit processing more applications?
Well, when the phones are shut down, those workers won't be answering the phones. They will be actually going in the computer and processing cases, and we're, like I said, we're training them right now to do that. So what will happen is for that two, two-and-a-half, three-hour period, the phone bank will be closed, and all those people will be processing these cases. So it will benefit the client because we'll be able to process that many more applications and recertifications.
How about emergencies? Somebody say, somebody got an emergency, they can't call in. What they're going to do?
Well, we do have that taken care of with, we're working with IT that we would make sure that those emergent calls would be able to be directed. Our switchboard is not shutting down, just my economic service call center. And I remember the switchboard as well, and I have dedicated staff who would still be handling the switchboard, and we do have the Child Welfare and the Adult Protective Service call centers as well that would not shut down.
Okay. But do realize that, you know, yes, we would be taking, you know, those calls, but this would obviously probably elevate calls above our level to you, to myself, to the county manager, no doubt, because I was talking to a client right before we came here, and it's just, it's, they have a justified concern, and we totally understand, and we hate that we're in this situation, but unfortunately, even if we shut down the phones all day, if NCFAST isn't working that day, it doesn't help us, we don't get anywhere. So that's the challenge that we have.
Well, I just hate to hear some young mother call and say, I got two small children, I'm crying, I can't get no help, food bank's out of food, I can't get my food stamps, what am I going to do? Well, you know, what am I supposed to tell her?
And we hate it, too. We hate it, too. Yeah, that's right, and that's what you need to do. And we hate it, too, and it's just hard to explain the, you know, I would really invite you all to come visit our workers and see what they deal with day in and day out. I think that would give you a good picture of the, of the stress that they're under in addition, because they hate it more than anything, and they're taking the brunt of it in a lot of ways. They deal with a lot more calls than we ever will, but they really are concerned and dedicated to getting this problem resolved. And again, this, this isn't a total solution, this is just one little piece that might help us a little. Until the system gets working right, we're going to, we're going to be in a hole.
Right. They should have worked it out before they started.
We concur with that.
We do, and let me tell you, we are doing other things like having staff work on Saturday and giving them a day off during the week, because we have so many staff who are overwhelmed with the working, they're working, they're coming in at seven, leaving at seven when the system goes down, working Saturdays. But we found that when fewer users are in, we've brought in some who will work Saturday and then take a day off, so we're not earning additional comp time, which then they end up having to take, but the system is, they're able to process a little bit more. So we're looking at any and every alternative. We can't shut our doors down, that's against, you know, federal and state policy. So within the realms of, you know, an eight-to-five business, we're trying to take our staff, the ones we can, and, you know, put them to doing other things. So we're trying everything we can.
I know we had an extensive discussion about this at the work session, and, you know, I appreciate your staff, and I know you guys are working very diligently to fix this problem. I would, I would say I'm very much in favor of strictly the phone policy proposal. I think that would help the situation, and, you know, as we had said before, that there's clients that are calling multiple times a day to try to, you know, reach someone else to see if they can get a different answer. Well, you know, by closing the phones, you know, you're going to resolve a lot of that issue. I would not be in favor of hiring the temporary workers to work on this just for the instance of the NCFAST system is not working that day. We have temporary workers that have nothing to do. So I think this makes the most sense of strictly going with the phone policy proposal.
Well, I can assure you, we would put on the work. There's plenty to do, but you're right, that purpose, if that intended purpose is NCFAST and it's not working, and that's, that's been the case for the last two to three months. We've had, we literally had about a two-week span, I believe, where North Carolina FAST rarely worked, and it was just so aggravating.
Are there any other comments?
I want to thank you also for your service. It's exceptionally frustrating when you're trying to work and you have your staff there and they can't be working, so thank you for that. One of the things you mentioned is that you are far more productive and you can enter more information when less people are working. I was talking to somebody this week, and I thought to myself, is there a way that we can change the rollout of this program so that entry is rolling? And I thought of Wacoia, when it was purchased by Wells Fargo, you didn't go to bed one night and wake up the next day- night and wake up the next day, and all the Wacovias were Wells Fargo's. They did it over a period of time. So is there a way that we can help you, or that somehow you can suggest this to the state, that we stop the implementation as it is now, and instead go to a more directed implementation where, you know, three counties at a time go ahead and input, and that way a lot more people are usefully and efficiently using their time? That's one option that I have. What do you think about that?
Well, there was somewhat of a rollout of the system. I think unfortunately, there were some federal timelines and to draw down funding that kind of forced a quicker rollout. And I believe what's happened is, and this is what we fear when we go to the Medicaid side, is realize food and nutrition is about 11,000 cases, Medicaid is double that, at least. Oops, sorry. And I think what's happened is, is all counties, with the rollout, as all counties started to get onto the system, the servers in Raleigh just, you know, it was a lot of traffic. And now we're going to add Medicaid to that. Unfortunately, that part has been out of our control. That's, we're at the state's mercy regarding rollout and so forth. And, you know, I think we have been advocating as counties for that, and we've been begging the state to really assess and help us, not only just from a technical standpoint, but just from a public relations standpoint. It's a public relations nightmare right now. This system is a mess. So we are doing all that we can, but we are somewhat at the mercy of the state.
Is there anything that we can do to help you with the state?
Yes. Our county manager has been very much on top of this and working with your association, and they are very much aware of this. In fact, Trish reminded me of a letter that we got, that Mike received back in February about what county managers could do to supporting CFAS, but, and Mike has been very much on the forefront of that and talking with the association. So I think there is advocacy there, but again, unfortunately, I think the advocacy now, it's too late. We're kind of into, jumped into the hole, and no one's got that rope yet.
My second option is sort of a modified phone policy, which is, it looks like you have 21 people now and 12 workers that are coming online quickly, so that gives you 33. It seems like, from the work session, I was there and just listened to you, that you said that you have a dedicated call center, and that these other, all of your other employees are having to feel the overflow, which is keeping them from doing their work. So as a modified program, from what you've been suggesting, could we, at 2:00, limit the overflow so that it's a limited number of people are only taking phone calls, and everybody else is working, and nobody else is taking phone calls? And in that situation, you'd still have somebody there answering the phones, people, the wait time might be a little bit longer, but as Chris mentioned, a lot of these people are people that are calling several times a day, and so potentially, you might stop doing that if your wait time was a little bit longer. If we really limit it to a very few number of employees, you might be able to accomplish all that you thought that you could, and still have the phones open and accomplish our public service as well. Is that something that's feasible?
We can certainly do that. We do have four staff dedicated to the Economic Service Call Center, and we could certainly limit it to them. They're never able to handle the volume, so the overflow would, I guess, get dropped. And we were thinking that a dropped call may be a more angry call than someone who can not just get through at all. I don't know, but we certainly would be willing to entertain and try anything. So that is certainly one option we have talked about, and we'd be glad to try that.
And you may not, four may not be the right number. I think it's a very small, it may even be less than four. Just because you have the capability there for eight to five doesn't mean that that's what you have to utilize from two to five, but I think that might be a nice blend of those two policies.
Any other comments, Commissioner Morris?
If I understand you correctly, the, this policy would, when someone called, they would receive a recording saying, "We accept calls from this time till this time"?
That's the thought. There would be, it would not be just an endless ring or whatever, but there would be a message saying, "We are not currently receiving calls at this time, please call back at tomorrow 8:00."
And how many calls would you estimate that you might receive during that time period? Just ballpark-ish, several hundred?
Yes, several hundred, definitely.
Yeah. So if I'm one of those several hundred people, I would prefer to receive a message saying, "I'm not going to talk to you till in the morning," than to be placed on hold and hear that little cheerful voice saying, "Thank you for being patient," while I'm yelling into the phone that I'm not being patient. So, yeah, that can be extremely annoying, especially if you've got a couple children that you're trying to take care of at the same time. But, you know, I applaud your effort to try to deal with a situation that we have no control over. You know, we could sit here and complain about what's been placed upon us by others forever, but that doesn't cure the problem. And so if you folks think this is going to help, then I'm 100% in favor of it.
We're hoping it will help. We're willing to try anything at this point.
And I hope you're right, because I've talked, as you know, to some of those folks, myself, as well.
Yeah, thank you.
I think what we'll do is, we'll definitely come back with reports to you at work sessions and then also at your regular meetings, so that you're aware of what the volume is and then what the results. Because you're going to get phone calls, we're going to all get phone calls. Just remember, too, that if somebody walks into the building, then they have to be served. They have to be, somebody will help them. It's just the phone calls that are shutting down for that temporary. So we'll do a, if you are moving in that favor or that direction, we will make sure that we do a public, a press release, a good public campaign to make sure people understand why we're doing it, and make sure that they understand the process. There's going to be some that don't see that and still continue to call, but maybe after a couple of times, they'll get the, they'll understand that they need to call back between 8:00 and 2:00.
Yeah, and I agree. We'll do all the outreach that we can, whatever route we go, and do as much education as we can, but it will still, you know, it will still result, I'm sure, in elevated phone calls to your level.
Yeah. And if it doesn't make a difference, then we'll be back to you again to discuss a few more options and see if there's another option that we can go with.
We will be evaluating, if we do this, we'll evaluate it weekly, just to, we'll look at, we'll take a baseline of where we were now, and then we'll look at, after a month, if we were able to increase our processing time, then we can say it's working. If we really haven't been, then it might be just time to drop and say it's just not working. It all depends on how the system works, but we'll definitely closely monitor and give you feedback.
If I'm one of those people that calls after 2:00, I'm not going to really care about that message, to be honest with you, I'm not going to. If I have a minimum wage job somewhere in Cabarrus County, and I go to work before 7:00 in the morning, and I get home after 4:00 or 5:00 in the afternoon, it doesn't mean that, that's not a sustainable salary, it's not a livable wage, and I may not be able to pull up, find a phone between 8:00 and 2:00, and it's not going to do me any good. And in order for me to be at your place to get any help, I have to take the entire day off from work. And by the way, I don't have a car, so I'm going to have to find a way to get the bus there, and I still have those kids that are screaming. I'm not a fan of the phone policy. I think that there needs to be, if a majority of the board says to go with this phone policy, then obviously, that's the way we're going to go. But I still have the same reservation that I had before. I don't think that, it's not your fault that NCFAST is not fast. The old, it's, I mean, this is just, this is how things happen in any of these databases, and it's unfortunate, it's not thought about well enough. I can tell you, school's going to start next week, and the system does not work. It is not up and running, and it's legislated when school's going to start. And those students will be there on Monday, and who knows if there'll be a schedule for them? Who knows what's going to happen? Who knows if we can do attendance and how long it's going to take? And it's not like everybody in Raleigh, or whoever they bought the software from, doesn't know that. It's the same thing with this. There are problems with it, you're forced to use it, we're forced to use it, we're getting phone calls, those will go up, I believe, exponentially. I can't do anything to get anybody their, your services. All I can do, which you know, is send that information to you. But for the people that contact us, I have absolutely no authority to do anything, other than let you know that there's their name. I believe that you have been very responsible to anybody who has reached out to a commissioner. And I think you've been responsible to the people who come to you for the services. And I believe that we have way too many people in Cabarrus County who do not get three meals a day, many do not get two meals a day, and that it is a true issue in this community that goes unrecognized. We have a lot of jobs that are service jobs that do not pay livable wages, and there are a lot of people working very hard at what they're doing. We're not a walkable community, and there are just great limitations on how they are able to provide for their family. Some of those are single mothers who, we talked about earlier, about child support, and they're doing everything they can within the system to get child support, and it doesn't come to them. So I think this is an issue that, there's a couple of issues here. One is the obvious issue that these citizens of Cabarrus County are having trouble with, and the other is how to make this system work, so, and how to get caught up. Because the idea that you have, what did you say, 5,000 or 6,000 people right now who are behind, I don't think if it takes you an hour to, an hour or more to do each of these cases, you're not going to, I mean, you're swimming upstream. I just don't see that that's going to be a true option. So if the majority of this board votes for the phone policy, then, again, we would get feedback and we'll know if it's helpful. I think that this board is going to have to look at some temporary staffing. It would be very nice if Raleigh would fund that and would see that they need to do this, not just in Cabarrus County, but all over the state of North Carolina, and make this system work, since it's the system that you have available and that you're mandated to use. But I think at this time that we need to look at our own citizens and that we need to step up, and we need to help our staff get this task accomplished. Because the next one, as they've already said, with Medicaid, is going to be even bigger. These would be some temporary employees that could potentially roll into that and help out to get that one onboard and not fall so far behind with it. So my preference would be that we look at some temporary staffing, and if it's not this meeting, I believe, I firmly believe that it'll come back to us, and that's going to be something that we're going to have to address. So what we have before us, commissioners, is a request for a phone policy, a temporary policy, to grant the authority to the Department of Human Services to establish a temporary phone policy restricting phone calls to the Division of Economic Services in an effort to allow staff to process and convert cases subject to approval by the county manager. The proposal is that your phones would be, for just this department, would be cut off at 2:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. There would be a message that people calling would get, just to tell them they need to call between 8:00 and 2:00. As I understand it, correct? I want to make sure that if this is approved, that we all understand what we're expecting to happen, that the phones will be cut off at 2:00. So is there a motion concerning providing help for Department of Human Services?
I move to grant the authority to the Department of Human Services to establish a temporary phone policy, restricting phone calls to the Division of Economic Services.
Okay, there is a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, there is a motion, and there is a second. Any other discussion?
One question. When they call and they talk to somebody, what's the result of that call?
We evaluate the, I mean, we do look at to see if it's an emergency, or we tell them, you know, we're this far behind, and as soon as we get...
The same thing that we're talking about tonight. We're 5,000 cases behind, and we'll get it as quick as we can. So probably 99% of the time, there's no...
No immediate action.
So even though it doesn't feel good to them, we're doing them a favor by trying to do something to clear this up.
Because we are trying to pull ourselves offline to get work.
Got you. Thank you.
Okay, there is a motion, and there is a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion passes three to two. Commissioners, if you will, please turn to page 552. This is a change in addition to our agenda, and it's all the way at the back. Mr. Marshall is going to address this, deals with NC Cooperative Extension Service requests for special leave.
And it may be that if you have some specific questions that Robbie Farr, our extension director, can answer, I'll call him up. But as part of the adopted state budget, the state employees were awarded 40 hours of special leave. This happened last year also. Because cooperative extension employees, for the most part, are 50%, paid by the state and 50% by the county, you would need to agree to award your proportionate share. So for most employees, that means essentially you're agreeing to award them 20 hours of that special leave. The state would be awarding 20 hours. They are not subject to any increases that you included for county employees in our budget, so this would be the way that they're rewarded. The state is rewarding their employees. So again, the request to you is to ask, would you like to award your proportionate share of the 40-hour special leave the state has included as part of their budget?
This does not increase our budget amount, because what it amounts to is they're getting an extra week of paid vacation.
That's correct.
That they could pick to take the days all at once, or they could take a day here or a day there. It's as they get approval, whatever your normal approval process would be.
You would go through the director's approval process for leave for his employees. They could use it for sick leave if they so chose, they do not have to. It does have to be used by the end of the fiscal year, June 30th, or they would lose it.
Do you typically, and you can just nod if you want to, or you can come up either way, let's say that I'm an employee and I'm going to take off three days in September. Would you typically make sure that the three days that I take off are these days before I took off any other day, time that would be coming to me to make sure that I didn't lose it?
That is a preference that I would give to the staff. I can't mandate that they take their bonus leave, their, this leave first. However, they would be aware that this leave does go away if it is not used by the end of June 2014.
Okay. And they have, you have a special way of coding it?
Yes, our leave system is an online system, and it's coded, and we can pull those reports down at any moment to see each of our employees and what their leave balances are.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
How much, I know this is a special leave, so what currently do they have affect as far as sick days or vacation days? And I know it probably depends upon maybe years.
It does. We have two different classifications of employees with cooperative extension. Our field faculty are what you consider EPA employees, and so we receive two days of vacation a month, so that is 24 days a year, and then one day of sick leave a month. And so that is accrued on a monthly basis.
Okay.
And then we have our county operations support staff members, and they accrue their leave on a rated scale, so depending on their years of service, it makes a difference as to their level of leave that they receive.
I see. And so now, if the county was not to approve their portion of the special leave, in turn, they would just receive 20 hours from the state and not the 20 hours from the county?
Correct. For the, we have, of the eight, of the nine employees that we have now, eight of them are one FTE employees, so they're 40-hour week employees, and one of those employees is a 30-hour week employee. So eight of them would be 20 hours of your proportion, and one would be 15 hours of your portion.
And how about, you said the field faculty and the accounting, what was it?
County operations support staff.
Yeah, okay. How many employees of each do you have?
We have one, two, three, we have four county operations support staff, and then the remaining five are EPA, non-exempt, or exempt from the State Personnel Act.
Okay, thank you.
And just as a comment, we did award this last year. This was the same thing the state did last year. They did not get a raise, and instead, the state said, "We'll give you five extra days, take it or lose it." And we did agree to do our portion of it last year. Any other questions?
I noticed that for people that retire, it's a paid, they get paid for their unaccrued days. It looks like the one exception to the policy. Is that mandated by law, or what was the purpose of that?
I believe it's just a part of the appropriation for this special leave by a legislation this year. So, and it would only be for any employees that would retire before June 30th of 2014. So if an employee retires on July 2nd, 2014, and did not use their special leave, then they lose. then they lose that special leave. Any other separation, they would not be paid out.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we have before us a request for a motion to agree to award the proportional, excuse me, proportional match for the special leave. Do I have a motion? I will make the motion then to award the proportional match for special leave at North Carolina Cooperative Extension Service. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there is a motion and there is a second. Is there any other conversation? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
You are a yes. Okay. The motion passes three to two. So now if you will go back to appointments, please, which is page 485 in your agenda. The first one we have is Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. Resignations have been received from Ms. Esther Turner and Ms. Marie Ramsour from the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. The regional ombudsman requests the removal of their names from that roster. Do I have a motion to remove Ms. Turner and Ms. Ramsour?
So moved.
Do I have a second? I'll second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We also would like to thank them for their service. I'd like to make a note that there are seven vacancies on this committee. We very much need citizens in Cabarrus County to apply and to go through the process of training for the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. I think that's a very important committee in this area. It doesn't get as much, what do I want to say, accolades, I guess, as some, but it's a very important one. Next one we have is amendments to the Commissioner Appointments for 2013. Commissioners, we've talked about this for the most part. I believe that if you look at page 493, Jason, did you have a chance to look over those?
Did.
Are there any of those that your schedule is a problem with, or are you okay with where your name is?
It was fine with all the places where my name is.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that there weren't, you know, some of us, we have some scheduling conflicts, so I just wanted to make sure. Okay? And so at this time, I would accept a motion to approve the Commissioner Appointments for 2013 as amended and set forth in the agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good. We'll get you good and busy. If you weren't busy enough already, now you'll be really busy. Next, Cabarrus County Tourism Authority. Cabarrus County Tourism Authority recommends the appointment of Tammy Whaley to fulfill an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2016. The position was vacated by the resignation of John Cox from the Tourism Authority. This is for seat number nine, which is appointed by Cabarrus Regional Chamber of Commerce. I accept a motion to appoint Tammy Whaley.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have the Council for a Sustainable Local Economy. They request the appointment of Helen McGinnis and Robert Brown. Helen McGinnis to complete an unexpired term ending December 31st, 2013, and Robert Brown for a one-year term ending December 31st, 2014. Do I have a motion to appoint?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
So.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sorry, I didn't mean to go too fast.
I'm just slow.
No, you're fine. Next, we have Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee. An application has been received from Janice Yao for the Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee. At its July meeting, the advisory committee voted to recommend Ms. Yao to fill the vacant at-large position for a three-year term ending December 31st, 2016. Do I have a motion to appoint?
So moved.
I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And next, we have Planning and Zoning Commission. Danny Fesperman, who we recognized earlier, terms ends on August 31st, 2013. And let's see, he is, let's see. Andrew Deal's term as an alternate ends August 31st, 2014, and he respectfully requests to be appointed to the seat as a regular member to fulfilling Mr. Fesperman's seat as the Central Area Representative for a term ending August 31st, 2016. We also have, let's see if I can do this better, a motion, let's see. We also have Shannon Fry as the, to be reappointed as the at-large area representative, and Armistead Eugene Devine as the Harrisburg Area Representative on the Planning and Zoning Commission for three-year terms ending August 31st, 2016. This would also include an exception to the Service on Multiple Boards provision of the appointment policy for Mr. Devine. We also have a request for Chris Pinto as an alternate to Planning and Zoning Commission for a three-year term ending August 31st, 2016, including an exception to the Service on Multiple Boards provision of the appointment policy, and also Andrew Graham as an alternate to complete an unexpired term ending August 31st, 2014. Do I have a motion for these appointments?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have the Transportation Advisory Board. Susan Caudle's term ended June 30th, 2013. She's served on the board since 2004. Ms. Caudle has requested Judy Kobel be appointed to fill her position as the Life Center Representative. Ms. Kobel resides in Rowan County, and the exception to the residency policy of the appointment, provision of the appointment policy will be needed. So at this time, there would be two motions, one to remove Susan Caudle, Life Center Representative, from the Transportation Advisory Board roster, and to thank her for her many years of service, and to appoint Judy Kobel as the Life Center Representative for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2016, including an exception to the residency provision of the appointment policy. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Plug it.
I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I also want to point out, very important, we need, we need some volunteers. We have a number of committees that we need volunteers on, but two that I want to really bring to attention. First one is the Human Services Advisory Board. The Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners is seeking applicants for five positions on the Human Services Advisory Board. Applicants must reside in Cabarrus County and not own or be married to an owner of an adult care home in North Carolina. Candidates must be able to attend regular meetings, regular monthly meetings, special meetings, and other agency events and training as required. Residents of Cabarrus County are urged to apply for the membership. The applications are available in the county manager's office, may be downloaded from the county's website at www.cabarruscounty.us, or may be requested by calling 704-920-2100. For additional information, you may contact the clerk to the board, Megan Smith, at the number 704-920-2109. We need five people who are interested in this committee or this board so that we can get them started with their work. Also, we discussed at our work session, the Charlotte Douglas International Airport Commission. The Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners is seeking applicants for one position representing Cabarrus County on the Charlotte Douglas International Airport Commission. Applicants must be registered voters of Cabarrus County and shall have experience in aviation, logistics, construction, facilities management, law, accounting, and/or finance. Residents of Cabarrus County with aforementioned experience are urged to apply for membership. In addition to an appointment application, applicants are requested to submit a one-page cover letter detailing their qualifications and experience as it relates to the representative position on the Charlotte Douglas International Airport Commission. And same, the applications are available at the county manager's office. It also may be downloaded from our website, and you may request by calling the county manager's office. Applications and cover letters must be received by or before 5:00 p.m. on Thursday, August the 29th, 2013, for consideration by the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners. This particular commission has been talked about a lot in the newspaper. This will be one seat. A number of surrounding counties from Mecklenburg County do need to appoint, and we have a deadline. So we have to appoint based on the legislation and the deadline, and we would like to have as many applicants as are interested so that we can make a good choice and a good decision as far as the Charlotte Douglas International Airport Commission is concerned. Next, we have, commissioners, in your packet, you have a number of reports available to you, and this brings us to under reports, under item number five, to receive updates from commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities and/or various boards and committees. Are there any updates tonight?
No, but I would like to let the citizens out there know that this commission board has nothing to do with the city of Kannapolis going out and annexing land in the county. We have no control over it whatsoever.
I do believe that I saw in the newspaper that they did not receive the funding that they were looking for out of Raleigh.
That was for that apartment complex.
For that one piece of property, right.
Yeah, but the 121 acres they went out there and annexed the other day, they did, it'll go through, I guess. But I've had several people call me about how, why did we let the Kannapolis City Council go out there and do that? And I said, we have no control over it.
That would be true. Anybody else have been to a committee? Yes, sir?
I will mention, I thought I had brought my annual report for the library. We had our trustees meeting, which gave us the total number of circulation items. It's incredibly large, and I wish I had those figures in front of me, but I think it's something like 700,000 items that have passed through circulation this past year. About half that number of people that have actually come in the door of one of our libraries. Part of those people would be there using the internet services, looking for jobs, that sort of thing. Part of them would be checking out materials. One of the most interesting things to me, serving on that board, is the information that I have received about the online resources that are free to our citizens simply by having a library card. There are literally hundreds of courses that people can take online. They are supervised. In most instances, they take tests, they receive a grade. The type of, particularly in the area of computer usage, things that would cost you thousands of dollars if you went out and purchased those, and the library has set a goal to increase usage of those programs by 100% this year. So I encourage everybody to go to their webpage and take a look at some of those offerings that are available and take advantage of them. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. And I've already mentioned the other, the commissions that we really need to hear from. There are also openings on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, seven expiring terms and four vacant positions, Nursing and Home Community Advisory Committee, the Youth Council. Do you want to add anything? Do you know where you are? Okay. We do school starting, so we need some high school students to serve on the Youth Council at various schools. So please look at the website and please get involved. It's very important for us that you're able to get involved. Any general comments by board members? Any general comments you want to give us after your first meeting?
I appreciate you allowing me to serve with you, and I'm honored to serve the people of Cabarrus County. I appreciate this opportunity to come out and serve you, and thank you for coming out to all the people that are here. I love citizen participation, and as many people want to come up and speak to us, I hope that you all come out and tell us what you're thinking.
Anybody else?
I would like to draw attention to the Power of Age Survey. A dialogue on aging is underway, and Cabarrus County wants the community to add their voice to the conversation. Cabarrus County is working to understand how to best serve the senior population in our county, which includes residents in varying stages of activity, ability, health, and need. With guidance from a community survey, input from community partners, and feedback from the Board of Commissioners, the task force will design a five-year strategic plan to assist aging adults and their families in Cabarrus County. All county residents are invited to participate in a short survey and provide their input on aging topics. The survey is available in person or online in English and Spanish. To take the survey online, visit the Hot Topics section of the Cabarrus County website, which again is www.cabarruscounty.us. Residents without computer access are invited to take the survey between 8:00 and 5:00 p.m. at the Cabarrus County Senior Centers located on Corbin Avenue in Concord and Park Drive in Mount Pleasant. They also may come here to the Cabarrus County Government Center between 8:00 and 5:00 p.m. in room 235, or at any scheduled county lunch plus meal site. I've taken the survey. I said I became a senior citizen in August, so I, have you taken the survey?
I'm not that old yet.
Okay, well, you're not that old yet, but you need to take the survey anyway, because at some point in time, you will be that old, and you will need that information. So, and I encourage the other commissioners to take the survey, because whether you are the senior citizen or whether someone in your family is, I think that all of us do, are impacted by aging and the services that we provide either now or in the future. So please take it, take an opportunity to fill in that survey for us. We do not have need for a closed session tonight, so commissioners, this time, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate you tonight, and good evening.